Alderman Lewitin.
No.
Motion passes. Any other questions, comments on administration? I'm sorry.
Motion failed.
I'm sorry, the motion failed to put it back in the budget.
Any questions on the line items, page 1881?
Alderman, Ray Wesley.
We're going back to, here we go back to Plan B again, too. Back to this again. Do we go over what was put in, put back in and what was?
I got it. You got it, Brad?
Alderman Police.
We restored 50 percent of IML CM conference credentialing. I think that's, that's all under the administration, correct?
Right. We've taken out the labor arbitration seminar, Microsoft and miscellaneous training. We've taken out all books and publications with the exception of the ICMA and Illinois city managers conferences. We've cut out ICSC, IML Springfield Drive Down and miscellaneous conferences. And we've cut out the Springfield Drive Down and DuPage Mayor Manager Commission outings and intergovernmental dinners for a net of $12,672 if you go along with those proposed cuts.
It's half.
Yeah.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
There's, um, you're taking out the mayors and management's conferences and meetings, right?
That's correct.
So my question is, how do you network with other community on projects then if you don't go to those dinners or conferences?
You do it on an informal basis.
I am not in favor of taking it out because I think there's a lot you could learn from attending those conferences and, and dinners, talking to other towns and that because you got more selection of several other towns than, I mean, if you take that away, then does that mean you're going email all these towns or on that mayors and management if an issue comes out? And then it leaves us, the option is when we go, if the mayors and management still go down Springfield and we want to opt into legal fight with, like we were with the other issues here, that they look at us and say, well, you haven't been at the meetings or conferences, so what good are you? And does that leave us that Jeff is on a legal or legislative committee? You're eliminating him, so we dropping out of everything that we don't have a say so and everything.
We're not suggesting that we get out of the DMMC.
Yeah, but you're suggesting not attending the meetings.
No, the, well, these are, yeah, the golf, the golf outings, the monthly dinner meetings and that kind of thing.
But I, I will turn to the mayor per temp and ask the question because I know he has gone to some of those meetings with the mayor and I would like his input. Is it education for you to go to those dinners and intermix with those other mayors and management or not? That's my only problem with it.
Please.
Mr. Wesley, you're absolutely correct.
So, again, I am asking that the conference for...
Okay, what is it, equal, how many dollars?
I, I don't know. He's, he's grouped it all together.
Okay. How much money are we talking?
About $1,500.
And does that include, okay, it includes the dinner, intergovernmental dinners, the DMMC outings? Is that what the 1,500 is?
That's correct.
Is that what you're thinking we should put back in?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think it's educational that to work with other mayors and managements on, it's worthwhile. Then if you eliminate going to the meetings, why are we even?
I understand the point. I, I'm just asking, okay, so it's the DMMC outings and intergovernmental dinners you're looking to put back in, not the Springfield Drive Down, correct?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Does anyone disagree with that suggestion? Does anyone disagree with that suggestion? Okay, then, will you put the 1,500 back in?
We will.
Okay. Alderman Police.
Wally, as far as DuPage mayors and managers, you still have the monthly meetings that I think you're on the committee on some of those, right? Those, that's...
Yeah, I'm on the Technical Transportation Committee, Committee. Jeff is on the Legislative Committee.
We're still attending all those.
We're still attending those. Those don't, those don't cost us anything.
Right.
Those are...
Okay.
Meetings, meetings as opposed to dinner meetings.
Right. Gotcha.
Okay, anything else on administration before we go to the next fund?
So what do we cut, though? I mean, I mean, what, what was the dollar amount?
$1,500.
You added. We added it back.
So what's our total for ministry on?
1,172.
I understand that, but I'm trying to keep track of what we have done.
The number up there that says $12,672 under admin is now $11,172.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next tab is the city clerk. And again, trying to keep this as brief as possible. Page 82 and 83 is the narrative. Page 84 is the target level, which is down from last year. And page 85 are the line items. And in the clerk's budget, was it 1,800? We knocked out IML, the Springfield Drive Down and miscellaneous meetings for the clerk. And that's the 1,800 you see up on the, on the screen.
Any, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I suggest that we put, since we have half going to IML, I suggest that the city clerk, there is a conference that she attends down there every year, a workshop. I suggest that we give her at least that back into her budget.
I agree. So...
I don't know what the dollar amount is.
$1,000.
Okay, then.
That will be my motion.
And, and I second it. Is there anything on the question? Okay, then, I'm going to do an all in favor on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Shockey left the, you know, meeting at this moment, but I have no opositions otherwise. Anything else on the clerk? Okay, next one, Wally.
Next is community development at the next tab. Page 86, 87, and 88 is a narrative. Page 89 is the target level, which reflects the $10,000 increase over last year. Page 90 are the line items. And in community development, you've added quite some, either added some back or have agreed with us to go ahead and cut some more. There's $24,300 left. Look, is what they took out? All right, so the rest is still in there. So the recommendation on Plan B is to reduce overtime by $400.
Okay.
Reduce our leave buyback by 1,000. Reduce maintenance for vehicles by 500. Cut out 15,000 in professional services. Cut out $1,000 of the amount for fire district plan reviews. Cut out $1,500 for education and training. And cut out $4,900 for conferences and meetings.
And on the education and training line item, is that, what was that education again? The, the 1,500 that was coming out?
Yes. What I did, I initially had sort of bumped our training up a little bit from what our actual 2010 was going to be anticipated for me to be able to send staff to training for the 2009 ICC codes. But again, to, in an effort to lower the budget, I'll, I'll just stay with what our 210 actual expenses are going to be and we'll make do.
Okay. So the, the suggestion was to cut out, as noted by Mr. Dowthwaite. On the question, Alderman Police.
John, this is for you. On the, eliminating the need to contract out the electrical, you got a reduction of 10,000 there?
Correct.
If it's true that, you know, I know we talked about those two buildings because I commented last week about 600,000 in permits and I came to you the next day, how realistic is that for those two new buildings? And you say, well, it's pretty realistic. These guys are bringing in plans, they're starting to move along. If we cut out the full 10,000, are we going to be able to do all the in-house or are we going to have to come back later and do a budget amendment? Just out of curiosity. Because, I mean, those two buildings could be rather involved and I don't know, I'm not sure which one of the inspectors is going to be picking up the slack on this as far as...
Yeah, John Philander, our chief building inspector, is a licensed electrician. And when he worked for DuPage County, he did the electrical inspections for the county as well. So he and I have talked at length about this. He feels confident that he would be able to handle the workload because again, they're not, he's not going to be inspecting the entire building at once. They usually do it floor by floor or partial floor by partial floor. If perchance, we do find that, that we've run into a crunch and we would need to hire an electrical inspector as a consultant, we could just arrange that as a pass-through expense.
Alderman Ray Wesley.
John, you have in our Plan B here, we got conferences and meetings. There's a, is that the reduction of 49, 2,000 left? What's that for?
That would be for me to attend an annual conference, the ICC Building Code Conference, which allows me to collect quite a few CEUs that I'm required to get every year. And then there still is a little bit in there for this year's ICSC trip.
Where does the Vegas trip come in for Ross and Jeff?
Part of this money in here would handle the hotel and food for Ross.
Is that still in there?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's included in the 2,000.
I'd like to take that out.
Mr. Wilson?
No, this is for the conference of, to Vegas, correct? That's what I'm asking.
Correct. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Clicker and Mr. Mermis, but the conference that they're attending that probably 95% of it's already paid for and checks have been cut for is actually in May. So the proper accounting is to account for it in the next budget year, but the money is not reallocated for them to go the following year. So the conference that they're about to go to is already paid for, tickets bought, the whole nine, so.
Right.
Well...
It's, it's more of an accounting function from the actual time that they're going, but there are no plans for them to go in future years at this point.
Well, if that's the case, if they're going this time, I'd like to see them come back to this council and give a report of how they're going to sell Wooddale down in Vegas.
We have that report prepared already. We give that report every year before we go, then we give a summary when we get back. So you'll get that as you always do. And there's no plans to go in the future that's already been cut out of the budget. So this will be the last year unless the council decides to reinstate.
Okay. Alderman Lewitin.
I think last year they came back with some very good ideas. If I'm not wrong, anybody can correct me, they came out with a brochure and that brochure got paid for by some grant that they were able to pick up. And people who, you know, the people in Vegas that they're going to see aren't just from, from Vegas and from Nevada, they're from all over. And, you know, I don't want to repeat the same object twice, but AAR is in Wooddale and that's a national company, could locate anywhere. City Chicago spent a lot of money to bring Boeing to Chicago. There's a lot of things that, I call them seed money. You know, you plant them and things come up, you know, when it's time to harvest. And I can see that Jeff has something to say, so I'm going to relinquish the floor to him.
Yeah, I was just going to say Alderman Lewitin's correct. In the past, we've gotten grants to pay for our promotional material. Each year we go down there, we actually take a, an advanced step. Last year was the first time we actually had a, a display for Wooddale. So we'll bring, or we actually have a new display this year, so we'll bring that to a council meeting before we go. And then we have our promotional folders and marketing material on display. And I think only about 50 communities had that last year, so we were one of 50 that had that. So we'll bring all that stuff to you.
Excellent. Okay, anything else? So right now, is anyone not in favor of the cuts he has presented? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
But John just stated part of, are you saying that the Vegas trip is not part of this $2,000 like John said it was?
No, it is part, it's in the number, right?
He just said it isn't.
But there's still other parts.
Right, there, there are some expenses. I don't believe Ross' hotel has been paid in advance or that. So I had to account for some of that out of this, this budget.
Now, they've been down there how many times already?
Two.
Twice. And I haven't seen any businesses come in or anything going forward. So I agree, next, this is it for, if I'm on this council, I, I... And then the other thing, the education and training? What's, that's for your licenses or are those for licenses for the?
No, the conferences, excuse me. The conferences and the meetings at 2,000...
Education and training.
Yeah, the, the $5,000 that, the revised figure, that's for all the departmental staff to take any trainings to prepare them for the new code or for trainings that they need to take to keep their, to get their CEUs, to keep their certifications active. This education and training line item is for local, within the area, trainings and seminars.
Thank you.
Alderman Police.
Bottom line is, they went down there. At the first time they went, we didn't even have the Thorndale Corridor study. Now we do. You know, you've got to give them some ammunition. You're going to, to make the blanket statement, when we go to IML, how many great things has the council brought back? I mean, we can say that too. Come on. Let's be realistic here.
Okay, and let's not belabor the point because the money's already spent, so they're going regardless right now. Alderman Coles, do you want to talk about anything?
Well, last time I talked to Ross and they, and he said that they had little contacts with a couple hotel outfits from California. All kind of people that they meet all over the United States go there. So, I mean, it isn't just, just because we didn't get anything, we still made contacts that they got Wooddale somewheres in, in there, a little town like Wooddale in this organization. So the next time they come, I think the, the money was spent very well, as far as I'm concerned.
Alderman Ray Wesley.
Nothing against Jeff or Ross on this, but I don't know where your backgrounds are on economic development. Nothing, I apologize if this sounds bad. But our city manager was hired for economic development, his background in that. So why don't we just send him down there? And because he sits there and says it's not worth kicking tires that nothing's going to come, so. I mean, that's his background. So if that's the case, then why aren't we sending him then, too?
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, what, what's your thought on that? Mr. Dowthwaite?
I went to one about three or four years ago, along with my economic development coordinator in Wheeling. And what you do down there is a whole lot of cold calling and a whole lot of glad handing and a whole lot of damn glad to meet you kind of thing. And I realized that I was not suited for that kind of cold calling and glad handing, that my role was to stay back at home. And when they brought me a potential, a potential deal, then I'd close it and back at home. But there's a, it's, and I, I mentioned this to Mr. Forrest, I don't know if any of you all fish as a hobby, but a lot of what they down there, do down there is, is like muskie fishing. You throw out the line and you bring it back and you throw it out and you bring it back and you throw it out again. And typically it'll take about 1,000 casts before you can get a bite from a muskie. And the analogy is very much the same down there. These guys are down there pressing the flesh, they're handing out brochures, they're playing damn glad to meet you. And I could do that, but I don't do it as well as Mr. Clicker does or maybe Mr. Mermis. And I certainly didn't do it as well as my economic development guy back in Wheeling. And I realized once I had been down there for four or five days, that the money I was spending down there was pretty much a waste of time, that would, I would have been, had a better return on my dollar if I stayed back home and had them bring me contacts where I could do the, the deal when they really had somebody on the line and I could haul them back to the boat. And it's a different, it's a different kind of skill set. I can go down there and try it.
So have we, keep throwing the line here, have we, has, have they brought anything to you?
Well, as a matter of fact, I had a drink yesterday with somebody that they met at last year's ICSC, who a year ago was trying to get land for a restaurant and now is, may or may not be involved in the Wooddale Station project if the financing falls apart. He's got alternative financing lined up. And through their efforts in Las Vegas, they were able to make contact with a development company that has given us a couple nibbles, if you will.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on, Mr. Mermis?
Just in closing, in all honesty, for the amount of dollars we're talking to send us there, this is so minuscule that I would just assume that the council feels comfortable now, just take it out of the budget for next year. You can see our reports before we go, when we come back this year. And then you know what? It's, it's such a small amount of money, we can find in the miscellaneous if the council thinks it's important for us to continue going.
You mean for the next year?
For next year.
Right. Well, we're not even talking about, yeah, right, I got you. Okay, anything, okay, so are we, do we disagree with the cuts he has presented? Does anyone disagree with the cuts he has presented? Does anyone have any additional cuts or additions? Alderman Lewitin.
I actually have a question about a cut. I, I'm not sure how I feel about it. Can I ask John, John Forrest a question?
Yes.
If you cut the money out of here to get your CEU credits, how are you going to get them?
Well, as I say, I...
Is it back in?
Yeah, there, there is enough in here, I believe, for myself and for staff to get the CEUs that we would need this year for our continuing it.
Okay. So I was just corrected by Alderman Police. The money is in there for the budget for the CEU credits, so that's fine. I don't want them cut.
Mr. Dowthwaite, do you need any kind of motion on, on this fund?
I don't believe so. If there's no objection, we'll just take that $24,300 out of the budget.
Okay. Next one.
Information technology, next tab. Page 91 is the narrative. 92 is the target level, which is down 20,000 from last year. Page 93 are the line item or line items associated with this. And this basically is some software maintenance agreements, our outsourced IT tech and some computers and some software. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, I have no questions, comments. Does anyone have any questions, comments on the IT fund? Okay, next one.
Finance, next tab. Page 94 and 95 are the narrative. Page 96 is the target level, which is down 2,000 from last year. Page 97 is one of the few expanded levels that I've recommended. We're asking for $6,000 for new carpeting in the finance department.
And you're just going to leave that in?
I'm, I'm recommending, it's already in, I'm recommending it stay in.
Okay.
Page 98 are the line items and Brad has cut 2950 in Plan B.
Where's the finance department in Plan B? It's on our community development. Oh, before it, got it.
And the recommended reductions in finance are a $750 reduction in education and training and a $2,200 reduction in conferences and meetings, which basically is the local Illinois GFOA seminar for both Brad and the accountant and the National GFOA Conference.
Okay, so the recommendation, keep the carpet in, cut out 3250?
Actually, it's a typo. It should be 2950.
2950. And the question, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Two questions, looking over this budget. We have overtime for three employees. How do you from six up, well, that's probably the pay raises, $1,000. What overtime do they do?
It varies. The biggest, I guess, chunk of that would be during the first part of vehicle sticker season, you know, when we process four, five, 600 stickers a day. You know, we don't really have a time to, to batch out during the day. And so the first week or so, we'll have to stay an extra half hour, an hour to do that. There may be an occasion, if we have vacations and a list of bills is due in a particular week, somebody will have to stay a little bit to help push through a list of bills. You know, and it's a little contingency as well, in case we have computer issues or unexpected absences, you know, for people to pick up the slack in terms of either getting the water bills out on time or the list of bills out on time. For example, you know, last year in fiscal '90, the actual, it's a little bit higher than budget, but we had employee out for eight weeks due to health condition. And we did our best to hold the line, but unfortunately, you know, you're going two months down a person, you have to throw a little bit of, a little bit of overtime in there to, you know, to get things to go.
I have two more.
Follow up.
Uh, the other thing, is that every other year we buy uniforms? Because 2010, we didn't buy any uniforms. It's not in the budget. But then this year, you're allowing 800. Is that a union situation there? Shirts and other uniform needs for five employees and three unions. Why did we not, why do we go 2010 and now 2011 with budgeting $800?
You know, I have to admit that that's almost have been deleted. Unfortunately, currently we're at about 700 and change on that $800 budget item in there.
For projected?
For projected, correct, yeah.
Okay.
And so the 800 is, it's, it's been, that, that number seems to work, you know, everybody has between five and six shirts downstairs, the union employees. And as best as they try, if you only have five shirts, you're washing them once a week, so 52 washes a year.
Okay. We don't need to get in that. The, the, one other item that I don't see, are we not hiring the intern? I don't see it in here.
Yeah, the intern amount is actually buried in the top line of salaries. So it's accounted for in that top salary line.
Oh, one intern. Do we need that intern?
Summer more than ever with the staff shortage we're going to have during the summer, most definitely we do.
Okay, anything else on finance and administration? Right now, the recommendation is to do the 2950 cut. Alderman Lewitin.
Can I ask you, are you aware that it's about time for DuPage to provide free labor? You know, are you going to try to get? You know, are you gonna try to get?
Swap.
I never heard of that. What is swap? You know, last year, they got funded from the federal government for the first time in 10 years, and I understand they're gonna do the program again this year, where you can get, maybe they're unskilled, I'm not sure, but if you're talking about licking envelopes and passing out city stickers, you know, you can get somebody for free for, for a couple of months from, if you, if you qualify for it. I mean, if they can find somebody qualified to bring in.
Well, we, we handle a lot of money down there. And our experience in the past has been that the people that might be willing to take one of those jobs are generally seasonal employees in public works who cut grass, but wouldn't necessarily be qualified to process water bills, business licenses, vehicle stickers, and handle money. I'd be real, real wary of, of entrusting somebody with the keys to the cashier's till, if they're just minimum wage or, or volunteer.
Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
One other question here, and, and I notice it, this now on this one. The maintenance office equipment, that's a copier's, aren't, aren't they? Why, why would we zero that out? Do we not have any more maintenance agreement, or did we lump it all in one?
Uh, we lumped it all in one under Central Services. Every time the invoices would come out, you know, it just administratively, it's a lot easier to have it under one account instead of six or seven. So you'll see that in Central Services, all the departments had their-
Maybe next budget, just delete that totally then.
Well, because there's trailing numbers there.
Okay.
For presentation purposes, we have to show the trailing numbers.
Alderman Ray Wesley.
Um, Brad, the education and training was cut there. Do you, for your education, for your schooling and stuff, is that, does that come out of here? Because you're still going to school, right? Taking some classes?
Correct. That's actually the tuition reimbursement in Central Services.
Was that cut?
We're recommending that be cut.
We're not there yet.
Okay, we're not there yet. Okay. But to keep your credentials up, and there's nothing cut in this?
You know, this will keep us at a bare minimum. This doesn't allow us to kind of get ahead of the game, or go to conferences on the latest, greatest. It's kind of the same argument that Alderman Wesley had for the DMMC things, you know, we don't have to go, we can email people, we can pick up the phone and call them, but it's heck of a lot more convenient to actually go and, and then meet and greet and talk in a big group versus just over a phone call.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, then, the suggestion was to cut 2950, and unless there's objection, we're gonna move forward to the next fund. Alderman Ray Wesley.
Madam Chairman, I know this is probably out of line, but since the mayor's here now, could you give us, because you work with the lobbyist, could we go back to that and get his input on that?
Can we wait till the end?
Sure. I'd like to, I'd like his input on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, next one.
Next one is legal, up the next tab, page 99 is narrative. Page 100 is the target level. And page 101, 102, 103, and 104 are the two expanded levels that I have not recommended for funding.
The first on page 101 and 102 would increase the current billable rate to Bond Dixon Associates from $160 to an $170 an hour. I recommended against it for two reasons. Number one, it is a request for that additional amount, not put us on notice, by the way, we're increasing our rate. Number two, we just raised their billable rate from 140 to 160 just a year ago. And in the interest of trying to keep this budget in the black, I recommend it against that. And then page 103 and 104 is a request for an increase from 115 an hour to 130 an hour for Mark Horton Belmonte, which is our prosecutors for our, not the DUIs, but the code violations, that kind of thing. And again, that was a request, and I recommend it against that as well. And then on page 105 are the line items.
Okay, so let's take the first one first, the hourly legal fee for Bond Dixon and Associates. What do we want to do here? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My opinion, I would leave the $10 increase in there, I would put it back.
To agree to what?
To agree to, I mean, he, he got it to not approve, I say we should approve it for $10, I mean, come on.
Okay, so there is a suggestion to approve it, anyone else? Input, anything else? Alderman Police.
Well, the way I see it is, we're gonna, everybody in the city, staff and everybody, this year, we decided to go with the raises and see where the state ends up. And if, naturally, if the state gives us the shortfall we're talking to next year, I think we pretty much put everybody on notice that we're gonna hold the line. I don't see why we're, all of a sudden, we're gonna just cut out the, the attorney.
Okay, do you want to make that motion to, to accept this pay request?
Did you make a motion, Gene?
I'll, I'll make the motion to give Bond Dixon Associates the $10 increase from 160 to $170 an hour. That is my motion.
And, and do second it, Alderman Police?
I'll second it.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the hourly legal fee, and that is for Mark Horton Belmonte, for a $15 raise. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make the motion that you give him a $10 raise, not 15, due to the fact is, I believe Bond Dixon does a little more than this outfit. So if you give Bond Dixon a raise, you gotta give this person a raise, $10.
Okay, motion is-
So that is my motion.
Is to give 10 instead of the 15, is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second, Alderman Shaq, he seconded it first.
Any question?
So, a first and a second, and a question, Alderman Ray Wesley.
This is attorney that does our, all our stuff in Addison, I correct?
This is the attorney that does all our stuff right here, once a month. We have our own prosecutor and attorney who adjudicate cases here in, in City Hall.
Who does our stuff in Addison? Who does traffic?
Traffic, also.
Traffic court and building violations.
And to my understanding, this, this, the law firms work very well with the police department with traffic and stuff. I like to put that like, $7 for the first six months, and then add the other $7 for other six months. This way, he still gets to his 15.
I'm, I'm not going to agree with that.
So there, there was a suggestion, did the motioner agree?
No, I don't agree with that, because now, now we're playing nightmare with the books here, seven, this month, seven this month.
No, it's seven for the first six months, and then he gets the other seven. So he still gets to his 15.
Alderman Police?
Or 750 then.
If we're gonna give the city attorney who's here weekly and handles most of our work $10, I'm not gonna give the traffic lawyer 15. I, I think you keep them the same. I mean, the manager recommended not to, so.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for a $10 raise, Alderman calls.
Do you know how much that's gonna add to the?
For a $15 raise?
For, no, the, if you, if you cut the request from, of, from 15 an hour to 10 hour, an hour, that 9185 you see on page 103-
About $6,000.
Is now 6,123. And if you give Bond Dixon their request, the amount is 11,892.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, so no opposition, motion carries. Any other comments on legal? Alderman Lewitin.
I'd like to ask you, on Bond Dixon, on their work, is it mostly office, or do they do some court?
My knowledge, unless there's a particular piece of litigation that they have to appear in court on, their work is office, and in this particular year, they're handling labor negotiations for the Teamsters non-sparan. But most of, virtually all of my contact with those folks have been either over the phone, or in meetings here at City Hall.
And when we had a labor negotiator, how much did we pay him an hour?
I'd have to go back and check, but I think it was probably at least 180 an hour. 175? 175.
So he's, it's a pretty decent price for office, and it's a decent price, very decent price for, for labor negotiations, and it'd be a super price for court.
I think, you know, frankly, if you just take a look at it and base it upon what other firms out there are charging, we're getting a deal. These guys are very reasonable in terms of their hourly fees.
I mean, but the qualities could, that's what's really counting.
I don't have any significant problems with the quality of work that Bond Dixon is providing us.
No, neither do I, that's what I'm saying. You're getting good quality, and you're getting, for lawyers, a good price. Very reasonable.
I believe so.
And would he do the same price for, for, if he had to go to court?
I would imagine he would, yes.
All right. Then that's very good. I think we did a good job.
Anything else on legal? Mr. Douthwaite, next fund, please.
Next fund is Engineering.
Okay, what's the recommend, Eric, if you want to go through?
Page 117, 118, 119 is the narrative. Page 120 is the target level, which reflects a $6,000 decrease from last year. And 121 are the initial line items. And in addition to that, we've identified $15,000 in additional cuts from Plan B. That would be to zero out our engineering intern, not to hire him back this year, and to zero out all of the line items identified in that, on that page, maintenance of other equipment, professional services, education and training, dues and subscriptions, other equipment, and miscellaneous, for a total reduction of $15,000 over and above what you see on page 121.
Any comments? The recommendation is to take out 15,000. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I want to ask the same question to Dave. Dave, that education and training, is there any of that, that you need to hold your certificate in any shape or form? Also with your other person that you have in that department?
Well, yes and no. The, the PE license, professional engineer license, is on a two-year cycle, was renewed in 2009, will be renewed again in 2011. In that two-year period, we have to have 30 hours, 30 professional development hours. So somewhere in that two years, I have to get 30 hours. There's a lot of free classes and seminars that I go to, IDOT classes, DuPage County has some free ones as well. So I don't have to have anything in the budget this year, I wouldn't have to next year either, but I do need to get the 30 hours somewhere in that two-year period. So that's for me. For our civil engineer, she's, she's not under, she's not licensed, she doesn't have any requirement for continuing education hours. She is looking at some point to take a PE class to prepare for the test, to become registered. She's not eligible to become registered for another year, although she could take the test now, which is why that, we originally had that in the budget, but that's not, it's not a necessity, that could be delayed as well.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions on continuing? Okay, the suggestion was to cut 15,000, and there's no objection there. Next fund, please.
Central Services. And this is the, the cost center that we budget a lot of the stuff for, that goes across departmental lines, and is easier to keep track of on one than another, or than spread them all through. So page 145 is the narrative. Page 146 is the target level. There's an increase of 300,000, basically due to increase in healthcare costs, and an increase in the funding level for the police pension. And then on page 147 are the line items. And we've identified 17,800 in cuts over and above that. Those would be to zero out the $15,000 for tuition reimbursement, zero out $300 for employee development, reduce recruiting costs by $500, and reduce our employee recognition by $2,000. There you have your 17,800.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I, I have one question. If someone is already taking a class now for tuition reimbursement, where would that fall under? Will he get re, will the person get reimbursed for, if he's taking, if someone's taking a class right now, will he be reimbursed for that class for this, this year? And say it's already been going, say it's gonna be a little longer, where will the money be that we already, you know, will that person or persons be reimbursed if they are already halfway through a class?
Technically, if the class ends in May, or after May, if you cut that out, then unfortunately, unless they've paid before they know what their grade is, I mean, a lot of people pay after, you know, they finish the class. If the class finished anytime after April 30th, then unfortunately, we would have to go back and tell them, we know you signed up for it, but it got cut, so you're kind of on your own.
Are there any classes in motion like that, that, that would end after that?
I know of one, for sure. Okay, so two, for sure. And I think maybe three. I just, informationally, I went through and I ran down who all took advantage of it last year, and who would be continuing with it this year, taking out of the equation who actually signed, said they wanted to take advantage of it. If you were just to do it for the people that are currently in the program this year that would continue on, that would be three people for a total of 6,000. Out of that 15,000 that was originally, but that would just be the continuing people to, to run out the classes for, that are in progress right now.
What, what's the cost of the three classes that are in motion beyond?
It doesn't matter. All we do is, all we do is reimburse $2,000, regardless of the cost of the class.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't have a bearing in?
I mean, you may have, and there are a lot of college courses that are significantly more than 2,000. All, all our personnel policy calls for is, well, if the money's in the budget, we'll reimburse you up to $2,000. And there are other stipulations that you have to have an A or a B to get the full 2,000. If you get a C, you only get 75% of it, and you have to commit to sticking with the city for a certain period of time, and if you don't, you have to pay us back.
And it's all in the policy?
It's all in the policy.
So those who are engaging in classes for this current fiscal year will get the appropriate reimbursement for, for the activity engaged, entered into this year, right?
Well, not if it's cut out of the budget, no.
I mean, for this current, the fiscal year we're in?
Yeah. It's all been, it's all been spent.
Okay, good. Okay, so it, it's been paid to the- Okay, so it, it's been paid to the individuals who are engaged.
It's all been paid.
Okay.
But the classes that are in progress right now haven't been reimbursed yet because they haven't ended yet, so you can't reimburse the class because it hasn't ended yet. So it would be in next fiscal year when we would be turning in those receipts for the classes we're taking right now.
And you turn in receipts previously for the classes? That you'd be, get paid out in this current fiscal year?
Like in October, December, or something like that.
Okay. Eugene Wesley?
So, here's what I'm understanding, that the people that are in classes right now should be able to collect their money after their class is over with. So to eliminate all of the training, all the tuition reimbursement, I think what I, if I'm not going the right, right way here, some of that money needs to be reinstated for the people that are in the middle of classes right now, and their class will not end by the end of this year, because they already committed to the classes. I think that money, some of that money, if they could come back to us on how much?
Six thousand, because there's three people.
All right, is it six, then I would say six thousand for the people could get reimbursed, so we need to put six thousand dollars back into this budget for tuition to pay the three people that are in the middle of class right now. That don't mean no one could go and sign up tomorrow for another class. These are to replace the money that is outspent already on these three people that are in the middle of a class to better Kate their education to the city. So I think they need to be reading, six thousand to go back in.
And that, and then that, and that runs the program out, and we don't do it anymore.
Right.
Right. They get reimbursed for the three, for, since they in the middle of class, and then after that, it's done.
That all the six thousand dollars will cover that.
It's all, I'm, I'm just asking for that.
Right, I'm too. Okay, Alderman Police?
We're sure it's three people and not four, correct? And it's, I don't want to say six, and it's four, I mean, we could leave the latitude that if it's four, it's eight.
I, I went back and I analyzed who used it in the current fiscal year, and there were five individuals that utilized it in the current fiscal year. Of those five, two have completed the programs that they're, that they were in, so there's not gonna be a need for them in this coming fiscal year. There are, the other three individuals are still continuing on with, with their education.
And we're talking about this semester that's gonna end, some end, some end the end of April, some end the end of May, beginning of June. It's not summer school classes that haven't started yet.
Correct. Those are all classes that are currently enrolled.
Ending with this semester we're in right now.
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Ray Wesley.
I'll go back to the question I did before. This is the part where you're going to school?
Correct.
So, for your job, to, to go further, I mean, do you meet, this is probably overstepping, the qualifications for your job, or is it continued education for your job, for tuition?
To keep his license.
To keep your license and everything. So are you going for your masters, or you going for your CPA?
Oh, correct.
You follow, I'm not.
Personally, the degree is an MSA, Masters of Science and Accountancy, that would allow me to sit either the CPA or the CPFO, and so I can go for either one of those at that point, so.
And my, my point on this is if your, your education is cut on the reimbursement, does that, for your education, doesn't that help us with accreditation for accounting and stuff? For awards and?
You know, I mean, certainly the knowledge base that the finance department as a whole obtains and possesses certainly helps to, to build on that and allow to, to receive these awards and stuff. I know, I was speaking with Alderman Police a week or two ago, and we were kind of talking about the different awards, and the first conference that the city actually sent me to was on obtaining the budget award, which we got last year. Third conference you sent me to was how to prepare a budget in such a way to make it easy to read and to help obtain, you know, clarity and to help, different methods to make sure it balances, which, you know, with the manager Douthat and his methodology, the target levels, would it be been able to achieve that even in tough economic times? So I think certainly the classes that, that I've attended at the graciousness of the city have certainly paid off and, and, you know, continued to do so with the budget awards and the audit awards and other things we've been able to do.
Okay. I just don't want to cut your education, because I believe every department head, manager, city council member should be accountable. And if, if we're cutting reimbursement out for tuition and stuff, and you're not getting the education, and your accountability is not as good, so that's important to me, so.
Sure, and I appreciate that.
I just want to make sure that you're gonna be taken care of on accountability. Thank you.
Okay, so just to recap, we are looking at accepting the city services cuts as recommended, except for adding the six thousand back in. So all cuts except for six thousand. I'm gonna call on Alderman Lewitin, and then back to Alderman Wesley, Alderman Lewitin.
Manager Douthat, let me just see if I got this straight. We're putting six thousand dollars back into the school budget, the reimbursement budget, if a tuition reimbursement, thank you. But we pay different reimbursements depending on the grade. For simplicity of math, if they all came back with a C, would you then take the two thousand dollar difference and put it back into the general fund?
Assuming that the classes cost more than two thousand dollars, and that was the max we would reimburse them.
I got that. That's six thousand dollars, it's two thousand apiece, and let's just say for simplicity that all of them are entitled to two thousand dollars for passing the class. And they could all get a C, there's now, now they're only get seventy-five percent of that, so does the balance go back into the general fund?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay, then, any, do you need a motion on this, since we're going against like?
If there's, if there's general consensus that that's what you want to go with, I'll take that and keep moving along.
Okay, I believe there's general consensus. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Ray Wesley.
We're just talking about the reimbursement.